Hello, everybody. It's Wednesday, October 13th. I'd like to call a special meeting of the Dover Town Board to order by first standing and saying the pledge to the flag. The time is seven, six thirty-six.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to start the night out, are there any public comments on agenda items only? Seeing no one approaching the podium, we're gonna have a short presentation tonight by our librarian and Sue Jackson. They're gonna give us some good news about the library, so the podium is yours. Just do me a favor to state your names.
Okay. Hi, I'm Susan Jackson. I'm the Assistant Treasurer and a trustee of the Dover Plains Library Association. On behalf of the trustees, I'd like to thank the town very much for the new window installation that went in yesterday. The ten windows are much more energy efficient and gonna be reflect well on the library and save a fortune in fuel oil. I would also like to introduce our library director, Donna Peroli, who has been with us since January 2021. And she has been bringing in a lot of new programs to the library, a lot of e-resources for people to borrow materials at home for books and movies. And she actually applied for and was given a grant from Mark Molinaro, the Learn, Play, Grow grant. And she's using this to focus on gaining a bookmobile to bring resources to areas of the town that may not have transportation. So I'm gonna introduce Ms. Peroli to tell you more about that.
Good evening. My name is Donna Peroli. I'm the Director of the Dover Plains Library. I'm here tonight to talk about the bookmobile project that we've started. When the grant first came to light, all the librarians in Dutchess County were discussing what they would like to do with this money. And a lot of the libraries were talking about furniture and beautifying gardens and things like that. But I wasn't really sure that something like that would help our library and our community as much as something that would kind of reach out to the community. So I brought the question to my staff, since I was a fairly new director at the time, not knowing much about the town. And one of my assistants said that she really would like to have a bookmobile, and I asked her why. It seemed like kind of an outdated resource. You know, I remember being little and the bookmobile would come to your community and you'd, you know, we'd get all excited. But I haven't really seen any around lately. So I did some research and I started thinking about what the town, how the town is spread out geographically. And how a lot of people don't come to our library because they can't get there. There's no public transportation. And a lot of families have only one car. There are eight thousand and six hundred and ninety-nine residents of Dover, but only a little over half of them have library cards. So we'd like to reach those who don't have library cards, especially the children who may not even know about the library because their parents don't have time to take them or they don't have resources to take them. So that's how the whole idea of the bookmobile came about. And so I applied for the grant, we got the money, and now we're exploring. We got some quotes from vendors and I applied for more money. And once we figure out how much we're gonna get totaled, then we'll start shopping for the bookmobile. But we're very excited about how it will impact the community. And initially, we liked to focus on children, but we hope to expand that and focus also on maybe older residents who can't get to the library, health reasons or whatever may be. So we first planned to stop at the schools and then also to some of the mobile home communities where the children there may not, you know, go to the library regularly. So that's our initial plan. And then from there, we'd like to expand, like I said, to adults. And that's basically where we stand right now.
Very nice.
Awesome, Donna.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the grant.
Yes, absolutely. Congratulations on the grant. Now, when you say bookmobile, would that be a vehicle that has like internet access with a computer on it and things like that? You know, like we, I remember the bookmobile too when I was younger. But updated version of that, you know.
That's what we're hoping for. We, you know, wanna get it all set with Wi-Fi hotspots and computers, laptops, you know, all set for programs. Maybe with even a screen and projector for presentations and things like that.
Sure.
Yeah. We hope to use it even beyond that at events and like Dover Day, we were there. An attempt this year, but maybe next year when we have the bookmobile, we could drive up and be all set to use it that way and promote it through the community.
Absolutely. You had a great idea.
You mentioned, you mentioned our seniors and I can go back to when we were delivering meals, right? For the four, four and a half months, fourteen, fifteen weeks, we delivered meals. How many of the senior citizens were, they, you knock on the door, they'd let you in? And how many of them had a magazine or a book in their hand, right? But they can't get out because they're homebound. They're not truly, they're kind of like me, they're not computer, you know? They, they just don't know how to work around a computer, but they'll still read. So when you said that, that came to my mind. But, uh, thank you. And I didn't get a number. What was the grant you applied for? How much? You don't know yet?
Oh, the one, well, the one that we got already was fifty thousand.
Okay.
But the, I applied for more through other grants that are available through the county and I'm waiting to hear what we'll get. So I, I kinda was reaching for the stores, but we'll see what we get.
I'm the one that's already there and guaranteed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But thank you very much for your presentation. I hope it works out well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we're gonna open the first of two public hearings. I'd entertain a motion to open a public hearing on the 2022 assessment for the Cricket Hill Drainage District.
So moved.
Second.
Opened by Abrams, seconded by House. Public hearing is now open. Are there anybody from the audience would like to speak at this public hearing on the Cricket Hill Drainage District?
I will say just that, should I say now or?
Sure.
Just that we did opt to not raise any more funds for both this and the Mills Drainage District last year. And even in the midst of all the flooding and rains that we've had this year, these still held up. There was no work needed to them, so.
And we'll, we'll see that here in a little while for this proposed, this tentative budget as well. But at this time, I will ask to keep this public hearing open until the Council twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I would suggest it be kept open to the twenty-seventh as tonight's a budget workshop meeting in case any changes are made.
We will accept writing.
People will have opportunity to speak again on the twenty-seventh if anything changes from the preliminary to the potential tentative budget.
Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to keep the public hearing open.
So moved.
Second.
Keeping the public hearing open, moved by House, seconded by Abrams. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This public hearing will remain open till the twenty-seventh of October. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing on the 2022 assessment for the Mills Drainage District.
So moved.
Second.
Brought by Maluta, seconded by House. Public hearing is now open. Are there any comments from the audience? I'll reiterate what Councilman Abrams said on the last one. We were able to hold our own and hold the line last year and not tax this drainage district as well. We have done some work to our drainage districts throughout this year, but we are still good. I will let you all know that again. But again, I would ask for a motion to keep this public hearing open as well until the twenty-seventh of October, where some people can come and speak on it if they choose to. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So moved. Second.
Brought by Abrams, seconded by House to keep this public hearing open on the Mills Drainage District. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That public hearing remains open as well. Thank you very much. Okay. Budget time, you wanna read the resolutions first?
Whatever you'd prefer.
Whatever you want to do. Would you like to get the resolutions out of the way? Counsel?
Whatever you prefer. You can do them at the end.
Whatever. Okay. We'll do it as an order. Twenty twenty-two tentative budget discussion. We should be pretty quick. I do have notes on each and every page. Not seeing the rec director or highway here tonight. We'll go through the entire thing though. And we're gonna start right out on ten-ten, page seventeen. Should be board members. I'll explain the decreases. I'll explain the increases as fast as I can for you all. Page ten-ten, Town Board. You're gonna see that the board members, the four board member seats have been raised. This is due to the fact that the board members have not seen a raise since two thousand and sixteen. They are behind schedule. But the supervisors at the time did receive raises, which we corrected a little bit last year. So each seat will receive a thousand dollar raise, which puts you still behind the eight ball, but it's catching you up some sort, some ways. Again, since two thousand and sixteen, five years without an increase. Next page, eleven-ten. The standard staff raise this year is in accordance with our highway contract. As we always try to do, we try to keep our employees the same across the board. They will be receiving a two and a half percent increase in salaries. You will see the elected officials a little, one point higher at three and a half. And I'll explain it as each page I go through. So the town justices, you'll see a three and a half percent raise due to the fact that to keep our budget balanced, to keep our budget as flat as we can and to stay under the cap in the recent years. Through myself this last two years and previous to me, our elected officials have not taken raises twice out of the last three or four years, I believe I researched. So this is to just get them back up to where, close enough to where they should be. And I think that's more than fair. And that's where we're at in that. Any questions? You'll see only increases on the salaries on that page. Supervisor total. Come on in. Okay, we're on page nineteen of eighty-two of the budget. Twelve-twenty. The supervisors total, you'll see an increase there. If you remember, because of the issues with COVID and everything else, we lowered that salary a little over three thousand dollars last year going into twenty twenty-one. And to keep it on pace with the rest of the board, I kept it the same as the rest of the board members. Confidential secretary, bookkeeper and the clerks, standard two and a half percent raise in accordance with the contract. Next page, thirteen-thirty, tax collector, an elected official in accordance with what I talked about with our, with our judges. A point higher than everybody else at three and a half percent due to the fact that they gave up their raises twice over the last three or four years. Next page, thirteen-forty, budget officer, which is me. I did not increase that line. I kept that the same. That is more than fair for that title. The assistant, two and a half percent. Thirteen-thirty-five, the assessor and the clerk, two and a half percent. Down at the bottom of the page, everything else stays same. Thank you very much. Fourteen-ten, our town clerk, elected official, three and a half. Our deputy clerk and the assistant clerk, two and a half percent each. If you see that change on the bottom line, that was Mrs. Angles' line at one time in title. We have moved that, we have removed that, and we made some changes throughout to add hours to our other assistants. But we still ended up saving money and I'll get to that in a few pages down. Slight increase on the air purifier and filters due to the standard increases in product. Fourteen-twenty, the attorney budget estimates and expenditures all stayed the same. Actually went down. Sorry. The, uh, the actuary, you see line went down. The attorney stayed the same. Thank you, counsel. Next page, fourteen-forty, our engineer. Mr. Berger kept his line the same as well. Thank you very much, along with the additional work that we add to him throughout the year. Fourteen-sixty, the records director and the clerk, standard two and a half percent raises. The increase you see is going to be the assistant to our records clerk. We added some hours. We have two part-time employees now. Our town clerk came to us. It's not as high, it is not as high as what used to be when Ms. Angle worked here. That line was in sixteen thousand three hundred. It's now at fifty-five hundred dollars grand total. Correct?
We've made good progress in scanning, so it just decreases in time as we get further along.
Sixteen-twenty, our buildings budget. Just some, just some minor changes. There is an increase, but if you go down, you'll see a new line. I come up from the bottom where the twenty twenty-one adopted budget was a zero. This is gonna be the Tabor Wing House repairs and maintenance. This, uh, this property that we own, when things went bad or things needed to be maintained or fixed or painted or repaired or whatever other word you can come up with, we always had to, we'll find it, comment made. We'll find the money. So we're in a, we're in a good shape now by smart spending and budgeting that we've done the last two years. I felt it was good to add a line strictly for the Tabor Wing House of five thousand dollars. So there's part of the increase that you see. And I've also added money to the library and American Legion line. That's a considerable increase due to the fact that we have found some, Deputy Supervisor House has found some issues on the outside of the building that need to be paid attention. We need to maintain such as a possible pressure wash and some painting. So we added some money to that line to help prepare for maybe a major project down the road. And if it does come to that, we have ways to work that out. So that's why you see a big increase there of basically eight thousand dollars plus. Any questions on that?
Um, that's gonna be a big help because there's some lighting issues too that need to be addressed.
We have, we have a plan for the inside and outside lighting on that through other funding, but we'll talk about that later. Thank you, Jan. Next page, sixteen-sixty, central services, purchasing clerk, standard raise, two and a half percent. Um, you see some, you see some decrease there. Things went down, which is good. It's always good when things go down. All right? But it's standard, standard stuff. It's just everyday work stuff. Uh, sixteen-eighty, IT, our media clerk. You're gonna see a considerable difference in the media clerk and salary. But you'll see it down the line here also. You'll see that we lowered from eighteen thousand to four. But if you go down to the point four on the second line, we went four to eight. What that is, is we're gonna bring somebody else in to help our media clerk out on the IT end of things. So what it, what is it, what we did is we went by what we spent in the last two years on that position. We added some IT help on that end where we may lack in the IT we have in the media end. So we just kind of split it up, but as you can see, we saved six thousand dollars. We felt we can take six thousand dollars out of that. See that? Next page, nineteen-ten.
I think you should just mention.
Go ahead.
Municity.
The municity increase?
It's kind of a monster.
You're right. I passed me. Thank you for bringing that up. I would've saw it later, but. Uh, what Deputy Supervisor House said is we have a major upgrade that is due. It's probably actually a little overdue. Uh, this was, this was entertained a couple of years ago. And then going into twenty twenty, we just, because of the issue at hand, we just didn't get to it. And not knowing funding. So this year it is in there. You'll see that. That is, that is a major increase. It's a forty. Uh, where are we? General code municity goes from basically forty-nine hundred dollars to fifty-three thousand. So it's because of the upgrade. It's because of the upgrade in equipment and the programming. And we actually cut that. It could've been a lot higher. But what we're going with is basically what we need and maybe a little extra instead of the entire Cadillac. So that's where that was. Thank you for bringing me up. I did forget to look at that part of it. Any other questions on that page? Uh, back to nineteen-ten, insurance, town policies. You're gonna see just a little bit of a cut. Nothing major, but what we did base it on is what we spent last year total. And then we were told to prepare for at least a five percent increase and truthfully, it came in just a couple hundred dollars less. Association dues, nineteen-twenty. Uh, you're gonna see an increase because things are changing. Policies are changing because of the last two years. And it isn't fair for some of our elected officials and our staff to pay their own dues or pay their own registration fees, which is what is happening. So we in turn, myself and, and our budget assistant, with the recognition of the people who need to go there, we said, you know what? We will take care of this. So that's why you see about a nine hun, about an eight hundred dollar increase there. Next page, nineteen-twenty-two, same, same type of thing. Conferences, webinars, classes that they're needing to gonna take. Um, we may have some new elected officials come next year. As a matter of fact, we will have at least one, if not two. So classes that they have to take, myself and.
I'm writing them in.
And Jan. Uh, myself and Jan went two years ago and it was very helpful. There was things that I thought I knew that, uh. You all right with that? Okay. Uh, nineteen-twenty-four, the mileage, that actually went down. Um, our assessor, obviously she turns in, she turns in vouchers because that is her job. She does have to get around. Our recreation staff, they, they do the shopping for our senior citizens. They do the shopping for the crafts and and everything else for our day camps. Okay, so that's, that covers them. And what I did, what I did lower was the town board and staff here. We do have a vehicle that is available a few days a week when our code and building inspectors aren't using it. And then again, your board members get salaries. So we don't do that much traveling because the workers do the most of it. So that's the way I looked at that. Next page, nineteen-eighty, MTA tax. That's just fixed. The contingent total nineteen-ninety, that's gonna be the same as last year. General contingency of twenty-five thousand dollars. Next page, thirty-one-twenty, police budget. Sheriff's patrols. Um, we lowered it based on what we have spent. Now, even though we went through a rough two years, we still had Dover Day this year. Uh, there was no carnivals, but based on what we had spent in previous years, we felt that that number was safe. Uh, so we went with it. Again, you know, we're trying to, I knew some things needed to be added, so I tried to balance where I could. So we were, we feel safe lowering it to that amount. And if not, we find, we have ways to work it. Uh, the extra patrols and road safety, that part of it went up though. Okay, we had less events, so we went with that. But the road patrol, so we took it out of one, put it into the other, but it's still less than what it would've been total if we kept it the same. Okay? Uh, the constable training, that is the same. That's actually lowered from years ago because of the constables work in multiple towns. So sometimes we get lucky and they've been trained in other towns and that's fine. And we work it out, kind of like a shared service thing. And then of course ammunition that they had to certify with every year, we cover. All right? Thirty-one, I'm sorry, thirty-five-ten, dog control officer, standard two and a half percent. Uh, the bottom line went up fifty dollars. He had to replace some safety gear. I wonder why. Yeah. Next page, thirty-six-twenty, safety inspection total. This is for our building. This is for our building inspector, our code enforcement officer, the clerk secretary, uh, the building department clerk and our zoning administrator, standard two and a half percent increases on the salaries. Forty-twenty, our registrar total, same as that, two and a half percent. Uh, we did go up on, uh, uh, yeah, supplies. Um, the vital records books and the acid-free paper, the paper stayed the same, but the book did have to go up. Things have changed. So our deputy clerk, who is in charge of that, uh, gave us the total on that and that's what we went with. Environmental health program total, page forty of eighty-two. Uh, this is a program that Katie heads up. Um, there was a line in there. You see the adopted budget of last year of five thousand dollars. Uh, the department budget came in at zero. Got to the point where we can hold off, we can balance out, see where it goes from here. We have achieved a status, so we're there. We know where we need to go to. But she felt and, uh, that we can do away with that and help the budget out. And that is what we put into the tentative budget based on her information and her request. The next line, the EV charging station grant, that was something that was put in. Uh, since then, we have talked about it. We're going to search out some grants. We're going to search out some other avenues of funding. Um, so that is in there. So the tentative budget for this page this year is at zero. Fifty-ten, superintendent budget and estimates, highway superintendent salary. Uh, same as all the elected officials, highway superintendent, two and a half percent. Fifty-one thirty-two, garage, garage budget. Increase in vehicle and equipment and fuel. I'll speak about that here in a little while as well. A tower lease went up a little bit as well. Uniforms went down. Lab testing went down. We entered into a new agreement with a new company for our, uh, our drug test for our CDL drivers. Uh, cylinder and acetylene rental, oxygen and settling stayed the same. Uh, first aid supplies and eye wash station went up a little bit, basic increases. Everything was going up. And safety gear, we were able to stay the same. So you see a slight increase at that bottom line. Seventy-twenty, recreation minister, our activity specialist, I'm sorry, uh, two and a half percent as well as our staff. Um, you see the assistants in there. One's a different price than the other. One is the programs assistant, which was budgeted last year. But based on what Julie has said and what she has proposed, you'll see a slight, you'll see a decrease in that. But you'll see a recreation secretary removed from the budget. That is a position that Julie used to hold. She feels with the assistant title and another type of form of assistant, she will be able to get by. So you can, you'll see a big decrease there of nine thousand nine, ninety-six hundred dollars. Uh, that second recreation assistant at a higher rate per hour will be doing just about everything. But at a part-time basis, no more than fifty-two hours per pay period. Okay, that person will be working in the rec office, working on our seniors program. If one of our senior, uh, programs, uh, workers can't make it in, this person will be the utility person. They'll be doing everything. They may be helping Sean outside paint some fence. They may be helping them fix a bathroom. Uh, they're going to be a little bit of everything, okay? So that's where that is. Any questions on that? Seventy-one forty, playgrounds budget. Uh, the groundskeeper, which is, is Sean, two and a half percent. Um, we did add two new lines in there. J H Ketchum Pool Property, Memorial Pool Property in Dover. Twenty-five hundred dollars to help maintain and purchase and or replace, uh, playground equipment. J H Ketchum Walkway LED lights. That's the big one. Uh, as some of you all know, we all know, sitting here, that we did receive a grant for our walking track. So doing some research based on what Katie has provided and what Julie has provided, we came up with a number of ten thousand dollars. Uh, we hope that would be enough. But if it does come up short, we have ways to find the money for that. Um, through whether it be our ARP fund or through our fund balance. But it needs to be lit for those who choo, choose to work to walk at night. Um, but they will be, uh, LED and I believe we're going to go with solar, solar charged, okay? So there's, there's the two lines that, two of the, uh, few lines that we've added to the budget this year. Uh, the bottom, mowing. I do believe we received a letter today that that will remain the same. No change there. Um, the second line down, you're going to see a big increase. Uh, both, we have two parks now that are in full operation, the one in Wingdale and the one in Dover. So parks, ground supplies, as you see, it includes the J H Ketchum Memorial Park. So that is a, a, a considerable increase. Uh, field roller, that went down because we've got some new equipment coming. All right, the other thing else is just standard. Park signs went down because we ended up having to buy a bunch the last two years, so we're good. Uh, tents went down, uh, the portable toilets for our camps and our baseball seasons. That was a little over this year, so we had to adjust. Uh, so we had to make sure that there was a line in there for them. Okay, and there, the other two stayed the same. Next page, youth programs, point one and point two. All those salaries are brought up to schedule with the minimum wage schedule that the state will be going through. So that is going to eat up most of that increase that you see of around just under two thousand dollars. Any questions so far? Next page, seventy-three-ten, programs. Some went down, some went up. The ones that went up were based on equipment, uh, different rates for the instructors. Uh, but not much of, not a big increase, maybe, uh, five thousand dollars, okay? Um, again, the programs are based on the conditions that we're in. The school's still allowing us to go up there. We have to prepare for it and that's why it is in the budget. Next page, seventy-five-ten, historian total, they stayed the same. Seventy-five-fifty, celebrations. Uh, Memorial Day flags and flowers, what we do contribute, we kept the same. Holiday celebrations, Julie felt we can keep the same. Uh, you will see a slight increase. You can see that it was asked for more than I put in the budget. Um, but a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for basically Dover Day. And whatever else she would take out of that line, we have a feeling and we have knowledge that because of the fuel costs, we're worried about both the fireworks going up, but more so the rides for the kids that we get every year at Dover Day. We feel the fuel increases may, may hamper the price that we've had for the last few times. So we went with an increase there. But overall, it's the twenty-five hundred dollar increase that we put in. Seventy-six-twenty, the next page, adult recreation, rec assistant stayed the same. Rec assistant number two is new. One, one person just can't handle that program anymore. So Julie worked it out in her budget to find the money from elsewhere to put into this line. So that's why you see an increase there. Slight increase downstairs or down on the bottom of the page for programs. That's standard increases for instructors and or supplies. Eighty-ten, zoning. Zoning board members again are in that category where nothing's been done, uh, nothing's to, and such as raises and years. Uh, so we did take that to sixty dollars per meeting. Same for the next, uh, the planning board, which you'll see here in a couple pages. So just a slight increase there. And a two and a half percent for the chair. Next page of eighty-twenty, planning board, two and a half for the chair, two and a half for the planning secretary. And down on the bottom as well, we took it up to sixty dollars per meeting. So that is the major increase that you see there. Again, that hasn't been touched as far back as I can remember. So at least, at least four or five budgets, we went back and looked. That's been the same. And they are ba, very busy on the planning board side. Uh, there is a lot more work to be done. The meetings are much longer and we just felt a, a slight increase was deserved. And that's where I went with that. Uh, the land use, uh, the land lease, uh, that's still in there. We've been trying to find out if and when that thing will ever run out, uh, but with, with no answer yet. Uh, ninety-ten, retirement total. Uh, I was given the heads up, uh, from someone in the business world who was told that this may be a, a, a pretty good helper. And as you can see, we're down forty-eight thousand dollars in this line, one sixty-eight down to one twenty. And that came right from there. She confirmed that. I don't think there's any, any chances that it'll change and that's why we put it in there. Social Security, that's just the number that they give you. Not much, little bit of an increase. What's that, seventy bucks? Uh, that was the number she was given. Next one is ninety-thirty-five Medicare. Again, that's just the number that you got to put in there that they give to you. Slight increase, very little. Ninety-forty, workers' comp. That is down based on the information that we have been given, uh, the money that was put out. Uh, so that was the number we come up with. We feel it's safe to keep it there. And that's the number we went with, so a slight decrease there. Ninety-sixty, medical insurance. Uh, this actually went down. We based it on the money, the amount of money that we put out. You got to remember, we did, we did retire a couple of people, um, so that helps. Um, but that went down considerably and that number is solid and safe. That is the number that we put out plus the five to six percent increase, so we're good there. Ninety-seven thirty. This is the one, one thing I'd like to talk about tonight. There is the IT ban. You see it on the top of forty-nine thirty-nine and then on the bottom, the interest payment of six hundred and two dollars. I would like to pay this off completely of approximately forty thousand dollars. We have the means. We would get rid of that. That is for the program upgrade that we took on two, three years ago now. Couple of years ago under the previous supervisor or leading, I think it was got started under her at least. But I'd like to pay this off and do away with that and make room in a line for future projects of forty thousand dollars. It is in the budget to make the payment. But when it comes to finalizing the budget for the end of this year, I would like to do that. So please keep that in mind. I'm looking to use funds that we have, yes, to pay that off.
So is that IT ban, was that, was that a ten-year ban? It was forty grand?
Yeah, have more than five.
A four to five on the ban?
Five, yeah.
So was it forty K?
Forty K to pay it off.
Sirs and things.
Yeah, we just took it on a year or two ago, maybe. Forty K is the number that Nicole gave me.
Okay.
Uh, the next page, it's all cleared, nothing there. Nineteen eighty, MTA tax, stayed the same, eight hundred dollars. Next page, D nineteen ninety, that's that twenty-five thousand dollars that we started last year. And we will try to, we will keep it the same this year is what I'm proposing. That is a, uh, you know, in, 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 in a simple term, we call it the Equipment Replacement Fund. It does have an official name now, I believe, right, counsel? Yeah, so this was something that we felt, uh, we needed to start for Highway Department last year. We made it work. We made it work within the budget and we made it work again. And that is the same contribution, the same. The eighty-five ninety that went away, uh, we put basically that money into other lines that you saw that I had added. Fifty-one-ten, general repairs. Uh, the change that you do see is the overtime line on the point one. The sick incentive, I'm sorry, the first one that went up, the other ones are just salaries, two and a half percent increase per their contract. The sick incentive is that incentive that they have there where they can, they can, uh, buy back their sick time. They can turn, turn over sick time for money once a year, I believe it's written. All right, so that's, that's that. It was, it was used a little bit last year, so we had to up it a little bit. Um, the next dat line down, the overtime line, uh, we budgeted thirteen hundred hours last year. We used, I think, a little over eight hundred. Um, it was requested to go in at the same. So going back a few years, what we do is we go back a few years and seen what was used on the average. And there was a couple of heavy years as far as we went back and along with this one. So what we did is we met the superintendent, uh, we met Jason in the middle. He requested thirteen hundred. I had budgeted originally eight hundred, but what I am proposing is a thousand hours of overtime. Seasonal drivers, that did go up, um, basically because we needed them more last year. Um, we dealt with, we dealt with COVID. We dealt with, uh, a partial closure. So what I thought we should do is we should prepare because that cloud has not totally left over our heads. I saw what he used. I felt it was, it was reasonable. And we basically budgeted for just over or just under what he used last year in part-time employees at two hundred and fifty hours. Okay, and they get the standard rate as per our contract. The bottom, point four, as per Jason Satori, our highway super, keep all the numbers the same. So you see no decrease or increase there. He is good with the totals that we got last year. And he is fine to carry it over and keep it the same going into twenty twenty-one. I believe we're still waiting for some, some solid numbers for the, uh, the next page, I'm sorry, fifty-one-twelve on the CHIPS money in the pave New York. So what we did is we, we kept it the same because we feel that's going to be a safe number and close enough if it does come in a little over or under, okay? If it's under, obviously it will change. Fifty-one thirty, machinery budget. Again, as per Jason, keep it all the same. He is fine with that numbers. Uh, no increase, no decrease. He makes it work and he has been making it work. He will fix and he will save money if and when and where he can, and there's no doubt about that. Uh, D fifty-one forty-two, snow removal. Sand, salt, snowplow blades, as per Jason, once again, he is fine with those numbers. I had actually proposed in the beginning in my notes to up the sand and the salt. And, uh, going back and looking at what we spent and what we did, uh, I went with his recommendation of keeping them all the same, uh, same prices, so no increase. Ninety-thirty, social security. Again, that's a number that you're given and that's where it is and you'll see a slight increase on that one. Ninety-thirty-five Medicare, once again, that's a budget that you're given, slight increase on that. Defund workers' comp went down. That is the, based on the information that we're given, numbers that we're given. We feel good with that number that we're, uh, we're proposing, basically, uh, twenty-three, twenty-two less than last year. Medical insurance, this is a number based on what we spent again, plus a five to a six percent increase. But based on what we spent with the increase, you'll see a cut there. And remember, a lot of our workers now are a different tier, so they pay a little bit more, okay? Ninety-seven eighty-five, leases. Here is the next one I'd like to propose and I want you all to consider. The top one, point six, and on the bottom, you're going to see a payment of twenty-three thousand nine oh one for the fifteen Caterpillar Greater. That is a ten-year lease. We've only paid six, so you have, uh, payment number seven, eight, nine and ten still to pay. With this, myself and our assistant, our budget assistant has sat down. She came to me today with this and asked me to change up a, a different plan. We're asking to pay this completely off at approximately ninety-nine thousand dollars out of the defund with rollover money and, uh, fund balance money. And what this will do is it will relieve that basically twenty-six thousand dollar line between payment and interest out of this budget. And it will free up for some money, I think that we're going to have to increase some lines that we will talk about once I get. And it will free up for some money, I think that we're gonna have to increase some lines that we will talk about once I get past the last page. But still lower it overall. So I'd like to use the money that we have on hand, pay this off completely instead of using, keeping a line of twenty-six thousand plus for the next four years. And what this will also do is it'll alleviate this line, but it gives him room because as Rennie will tell you, he is contemplating updating and replacing some equipment that is very old and very wore out. So by getting rid of, by getting rid of this debt and him placing an order late this year or early next, I can then budget next year for the following year because that's when the first payment will be due. I think I explained that right.
Yep.
Correct, counsel? So what happens is, is if you make the purchase late in this year, it's invoiced in twenty-two. Or you make that purchase, assign that agreement in twenty-two, your first payment isn't due until twenty-three. So that's why, that's another big reason why we'd like to pay this off. And make this happen and leave the room for his both upgrades, updates, and alleviate some debt that we still have. And then, as you see, if we eliminate that one, the only true piece of equipment he's paying for right now is that Dodge Ram. Okay, so please keep that in mind. I'd like to do that. We'd like to do that, myself and Nicole. Uh, next page, thirty-four-ten Fire Protection Total. Fire Company proposed their budget. They put in their budget. That's the number that they gave to us. That's the number that they plugged in. I believe we have a public hearing on the twenty-seventh where they will propose their budget.
Yes.
I will have to recuse myself from that conversation, correct, huh?
Correct.
Uh, so Deputy Supervisor House will handle that part of the meeting. I will leave the room based on the fact that I am a life member of the JH Ketchum Hose Company. So that number is what they have, uh, what they have asked for. I do believe they are gonna be making another proposal that night for us to consider. Uh, next page, forty-five forty, the ambulance service. As per their contract, it's a two, two, I'm sorry, a two percent increase as per their contract. That's where you'll see the increase there of just under six thousand dollars. Ninety-twenty-five Service Awards. This is the LoSat program for the JH Ketchum Hose Company. Uh, the adopted budget was twenty-three thousand one hundred. But please remember, twenty-twenty responders were limited. Certain responders that were active on paper didn't look as active because you were only allowed to have so many respond. You were only allowed to have so many at the firehouse. So what happened was is some people didn't qualify for their LoSat program, and that number went down. Well, now with things opening back up, people can respond more now. More people can go to meetings, more people can go to any kind of functions, fundraisers, drill nights. So we have to prepare for those people who didn't qualify because of the issue at hand to now qualify. So that's why you see an increase there, and that's, that's it in a nutshell. Still less than where we started out years ago, but it's still, it's still a good chunk. Uh, ninety-forty Workers' Comp, JH Ketchum, that went down as well. Safer is better. Seventy-four-ten Library Total stays the same, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Lighting Districts, Mr. Abrams. Lighting District Number One, as you can see, we adopted a twelve thousand dollar line last year based on what we see, based on what we have. That can once again be lowered, another two thousand dollars. And I'll tell you some numbers after we get through the other ones here. Next page, Lighting District Number Two. As you can see, we adopted thirteen thousand dollars last year. We are lowering that to ten thousand dollars. Lighting District Number Three, this is the smaller of all of them. Uh, we adopted fifteen hundred dollars based on numbers. We can just lower that a couple hundred dollars. So if you look at that, if you go back three, three to four years, well, three years ago, that total for all three districts totaled over forty-two, forty-three thousand dollars. So now you look at this now, what we are taxing, ten thousand, ten thousand, twenty, twenty-one thousand, three hundred dollars. That's what converting those lights over in the town of Dover and South End and Wingdale did. Saved over twenty thousand dollars, and that's what we've been preaching, and that's what was preached when it was brought up. So there's the proof. There's the proof. You spend a little in the beginning, but you save a lot in the end. Uh, the next page, eighty-three forty Water District, uh, stay the same, zero. Drainage Cricket Valley, I mean, I'm sorry, Drainage Cricket. Uh, again, nothing. We don't have to increase. We are fine. We have still the, the fund balance for that district. Uh, we have done some work, I believe, in the Cricket District this year, and Jason feels we are still good with what we have left. Brought that to us, myself and Nicole, and we left it at, we left it at zero, so once again, for all you guys that live down there. The Drainage Mills, same thing. Same thing. We kept it the same at zero because we can and we feel we need to. There's no sense taxing the residents of Dover that if they don't need to be. And then that last page is just possible revenues, expectations, uh, for the rec program with all of its programs. But what I do wanna go to is the front of the book. Tendive Budget Summary, first page in. We'll hold it there for a second. Let me just go through the notes. What we have done and what we, because of responsible spending in the last two years, what we are able to do this year out of this budget, and it, and the lack of programs, the lower amounts of staff, the lower amounts at the camp this year with the first year coming back, we've been able to do a lot, and what we wanna do is we wanna put the taxpayers' money to work. We budgeted because we had to budget for what we anticipated, what we planned for each and every year, both programs and everything. But because of the lesser programs, like I just said, the lesser workers, because lesser workers, because you had lesser participants in the camps. With that, this year, our rec program, we will be getting two sets of swings that are up to date and much safer for the JH Ketchum Memorial Pool property. The old ones will be removed, the new ones will be installed. We purchased and updated a new line striper for our ball fields and a new sand pro to rake and recondition our ball fields, the diamonds. Alright, and for the lack of storage that we do have down there, and with us having to remove some things that are stored at the schools and at the Astor Building, we are pouring a pad, and we are purchasing a new storage shed with a garage door entrance for down there at the Wingdale Rec Park. And we have done all that with no effect to the taxpayers whatsoever. We've done that with budget money and contingency money that we've had. So that is all being purchased, and that is not in the twenty-twenty-one budget. We're able to do that. Why? Because we are strict in our spending, we are responsible, and a little help from the lack of programs, but your money is being used and not stashed away somewhere. It's being put to work. So that is that. With the summary page, you can see the allowable levy limit. Then you have the county chargeback. And that bottom number of ninety-nine plus is under the levy limit right now. Twenty-twenty-one Total Tax collected was three million ninety thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. My budget that myself and my assistant are proposing for twenty-twenty-two is three million ninety thousand, one hundred and ninety-four. We are forty-nine dollars less than last year. And if you see in that right-hand side, the bottom number, as of right now, our proposal is a cut in taxes. With everything that we have added to this budget, the lines for the Tabor Wing House, the additional amounts for the Legion Library Building, the equipment and the maintenance now at Two Parks. Your pilot money is finally working for you because that's where a lot of the pilot money goes. It covers the increases, and we're able to funnel it into other lines and other programs and equipment. So that's, that's where we're at, guys. Um, I gotta thank, I gotta thank all the staff in my office, uh, the three ladies there. I can't thank them enough. I can't thank the department heads, our town clerk, our highway super, our rec, Julie and her staff. Um, we held meetings. We sharpened the pencil quite a bit, uh, but we were able to make things work. And, uh, I think, I think it's a good budget. I think it's a solid budget. I think it's a budget that shows, uh, progress and a budget that shows what we have talked about for two years, and that's being smart and strict and not spending money foolishly. And when an emergency happens, we've been able to take care of that emergency and because we've been prepared financially for it. And if I'm way off, please, somebody correct me. But anything you got, Jay?
No. Good job.
Rennie?
No, sir. Excellent.
Jan?
No, sir. Looks good.
Deputy?
It's a good budget, Rich. Worked hard on that. It's really great. How, uh, how do you, how do you argue with paying down debt and improving infrastructure in rec? I mean...
And maintaining, and maintaining fund balance.
Having a reduction in, uh, next year's taxes.
Um, there's still just a, a couple of numbers that may tweak some things, but not very much, and we're confident by saying not very much. We still have to deal with, uh, um, it used to be Sullivan. I keep forgetting the name. What, Legi?
Logically.
Logically, uh, our IT, uh, company, our, our consultant. Staff will be sitting with them next week, um, but we don't think we're far off of what we've proposed. So that's what we're looking at, and again, I thank everybody that had, uh, put their time into this. I know, uh, there's a lot of pencil marks in my book, but, uh, all for the good, I hope. Uh, with that, any other questions? Two weeks from now will be, uh, public hearings to bring the tentative budget to preliminary status. Uh, so I would hope some people would come out and ask questions if they feel they need to. We'll be glad to explain why we decided to go one way or another, or with, with one number or another number. And, uh, there's, I believe, two open meetings that we will close that night, hopefully, on the Drainage Districts, and there'll be three others, right? Budget Public Hearing, Fire Protection Public Hearing, and Marijuana Law, right?
I, I think the public hearing on the budget would be, uh, November third.
The third?
Believe I have to double check, but because we have to adopt the tentative budget.
My mistake. You're right. It's after the twenty-second. You're right. My bad. Alright. Anything else? Resolutions. Resolution Authorizing Budget Transfers, Budget Amendments, Payment of Off-Abstract Purchase Orders and Prior Abstract Amendments. Be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Dover hereby authorizes the following budget transfers. Twenty-twenty-one budget from line D five-one-one-zero-point-one-point-one-zero-zero to line D five-one-three-zero-point-two-point-two-zero-zero in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. From line A seven-zero-two-zero-point-one-point-one-zero-zero to line A seven-one-four-zero-point-two-point-two-zero-zero in the amount of four thousand dollars. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Brought by House, seconded by Abrams. Just so you know, the, the first one is a defund transfer. That is a piece of equipment that Superintendent Satori has purchased, a roller for the dirt roads, I believe. Uh, the second one is a, a rec line. Um, that is to, uh, just add a little bit of money out of another line to help compensate the difference of what she already had for the pad and the shed, which will be, the pad, I believe, is gonna be poured in the next week or two. And then the shed, I think she's hoping to be delivered by the holidays, but it's more, looking more like January. So that is what that for. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried. Resolution Scheduling Public Hearing for twenty-twenty-two Duchess County Community Development Project and Grant Application. Whereas Duchess County has posted its application for twenty-twenty-two Community Development Block Grant, and whereas the application requires that the municipality hold a public hearing to solicit project ideas prior to submitting the application. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Dover hereby schedule a public hearing to solicit project ideas for its twenty-twenty-two Duchess County Community Development Block Grant application for Wednesday, November third, twenty-twenty-one at six-thirty PM or as soon thereafter as public comment can be held at Dover Town Hall, one-two-six East Duncan Hill Road, Dover Plains, New York. And be it further resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Dover does hereby authorize and direct the town clerk to publish notice of said public hearing in the official newspaper of the Town of Dover. I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Brought by Maluta, seconded by Abrams. Discussion. Madam Clerk, anything?
Sure. Um, today there was an orientation through Duchess County CDBG, and I was able to attend as, as well as Recreation Specialist Julie Munsey and Lizette Martinez, your confidential assistant. And they laid out the parameters, and the first was to schedule a public hearing. So we'll be, um, preparing some ideas for the Town Board and town to consider to submit for a, a request. The maximum grant is a hundred and fifty thousand. No match is required, and, um, we have a lot of good ideas.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carried. Resolution Authorizing Grant-Related Transfer of General Fund Savings for JH Ketchum Memorial Park CDBG Grant Project. Whereas the Town of Dover made application and was awarded grant funds of ninety-nine thousand dollars for certain improvements to JH Ketchum Memorial Park Walking Track. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Dover hereby authorizes the transfer of general fund money market savings in the amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars from the multi-fund money market account at M and T Bank to the capital project fund at Salisbury Bank in connection with the JH Ketchum Memorial Park CDBG Grant Project. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Brought by House, seconded by Maluta. Discussion. What this is, is so we can go ahead and get the project done. We are using the money, and then once the grant is released and the check is written and sent to us, we will be putting the money back. Correct?
Yep.
So...
Did the same thing with the driveway.
Any other discussion? Seeing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carried. At this point in time, are there any public comments from the audience? Marilyn? No? No. Seeing no public comments. Upcoming meetings, Wednesday, October twenty-seventh, six-thirty. Wednesday, November third, a week later, six-thirty, and then Wednesday, November seventeenth. Uh, the end-of-the-month meeting will be early this November due to the deadline to put in the final, an approved budget, which the date is November twentieth, so that's why we are meeting the seventeenth. And also, the night that we would have been regularly scheduled is the night before Thanksgiving. So it worked out for us both ways. At this point in time, I'll ask, do we need to have an executive session? Tommy, you have anything for us?
Don't have anything.
Anybody want an executive session? You feel we need one tonight?
No, sir.
Well, then at that point in time, at this point in time, for the first time in a long time, I will, I will make motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by myself and seconded by Councilman Abrams to adjourn at seven forty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everybody.